...payment that they need.
And City Riders can also ride free on the Dash Bus. City Ride is wheelchair accessible and the maximum cost for a one-way trip is $4.
City Ride is available weekdays from 6:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and taxi cabs are available 24/7. For more information, you can log on to ladottransit.com or call 818-808-RIDE. They're creepy and they're crawly, and for many of us, they can be a little scary. But for some people, spiders are beautiful and gentle creatures that are more scared of us than we are of them. We head to the Spider Pavilion at the Natural History Museum.
To some, they are creepy crawly things; to others, they are beauty in motion. The new Spider Pavilion that just opened at the Natural History Museum is crawling with eight-legged web-weavers of all kinds, hundreds of them, and they are everywhere.
So could we be walking and a spider falls on top of us, one of these big giant spiders?
You never want to say "never," but generally speaking, when people are coming in, it doesn't happen. They're really safe and comfortable in their webs. They're very secure. They're not dropping or falling on people.
It was really fascinating, much bigger than I thought they would be. And they really kind of are everywhere. So what is it people tell you the reason that they're scared of spiders?
Mostly, it's the legs.
Yes, all those many, long, hairy legs, doing things. Val Hatcher, a guide at the Spider Pavilion and the museum, says these insects are things of beauty.
You're a spider lady?
I am a spider lady, yes.
Did you know that without these spiders, we humans might starve to death? According to our guide, the spiders eat all the bugs and insects that might otherwise gobble up our food.
The mist is here. We do want to make sure that our spiders have everything they need, both food and water.
To Hatcher, the eight-legged creatures are not just beautiful. They are artistic. They are clean, neat, and industrious. We saw many quite focused on their life's work, weaving all those webs. Oh, and they recycle, too, often eating their tattered webs in order to rebuild them.
One's eating another spider.
Oh, it's eating?
Yeah.
That one's eating.
And these spiders can be bloodthirsty cannibals. Up, down, and all around, the creatures lurk, waiting to see who falls in their web. But no need to fear.
If something big and scary walks by them, their number-one response is to run away and hide. So they want to get as far away from us as possible. They are way more scared of us than we are of them.
It was fun, overwhelming. Um, we were a little scared at first, but then we started to relax and started to see how cool they were.
Are you bigger fans now? No?
I'd still probably call my mom.
For more information, visit nhm.org and click on the Spider Pavilion. Dealing with work and family obligations are enough to stress anyone out, but there's a place in South LA that offers tranquility and peace of mind. Anita Bennett takes us inside.
On this busy stretch of Adams Boulevard in South LA, there's something you'd never expect: a spiritual oasis called the Peace Awareness Labyrinth in Gardens, and it's helping Angelenos unwind.
I think everybody needs a place to get away, and sometimes you can't go, you know, far away. So being right here in the middle of the city just makes it really convenient for everyone.
Shawn Redding is a working actor, but the stresses of going on auditions, waiting for callbacks, and learning his lines can be overwhelming.
Well, a lot of times, I come to meditate. I'll come to the gardens here, and I'll just sit down and do some breath work, some meditation.
Paramjeet makes the trek from Northridge. She likes to attend the One Day Retreats and healing events.
You know, for me, I'm a very sensitive person, so I can really tell and feel when my nervous system feels overstimulated. And there's really nothing like meditation to get that relaxed feeling.
Each year, about 5,000 people come here from across the LA area. And when they're not taking classes or attending events, they walk this labyrinth to meditate and reflect.
So our thing is like, we are providing what people need most, which is relaxation, de-stressing, and peace. And that's become, you know, absolutely vital in our society.
The facility opened to the public in 2004. And while some people come to meditate on the park benches, others reflect or listen to the relaxing sounds of a waterfall. Visitors say this tranquility is just what they need to recharge.
Admission to Peace Awareness Labyrinth and Gardens is free, but you need a ticket to go inside. Head over to peace labyrinth.org for more information. It's a new lab that puts creativity within reach for all LA residents. Rashig Goel has more on how the Central Library is encouraging people to expand their imagination.
Imagine walking into a room with all the latest technological tools to create anything you want. Well, it's here at the Octavia Lab at the Central Library in downtown LA, a do-it-yourself center to dream, explore, and create, and it's open to the public.
We have this lab at the library because we are looking to show how people learn and how people become more technologically included inside our, you know, fast-changing world. We're trying to create, you know, have people have access to technology they would not normally have, either in schools, like little grade-school kids, or as adults.
The lab is named in honor of Octavia Butler, an acclaimed pioneer of science fiction who broke ground as an award-winning author in a male-dominated genre. She regularly spent her time at the Central Library.
She was a well-beloved library patron. She was coming to the library pretty much every day, every week, every month, depending on where she was living, from the '70s into the '90s. She would pretty much have her favorite table in the history department. She would do research. She would write here. And part of her credo and her belief and her advice to people is to be persistent, to be persistent, to use the library, and to be creative. You know, all you need in order to create universes is the library.
There are so many different stations to choose from. Now, this is really a great opportunity to get your creative juices flowing. I have to say, one of my favorites is the 3D printing. You can create anything you want and print it. So whether it's the library or, hey, an Eiffel Tower, you basically come in, create the design you want, and print it as a 3D model.
You can cut your own artwork, logo, or design, or use the computerized embroidery machine to stitch your own items, or take photos and videos with a green screen, or even perhaps make a movie or podcast in the studio.
Okay, so who still owns some of those old VHS tapes, audio cassettes? You know you have them. Well, this might be your favorite station then. Vi, I understand that we can convert some of that stuff, so we can preserve it?
This is going to be the equipment that brings in the generations. So this is a DIY memory lab, and with it, you can convert reel-to-reel, 8mm. We can record VHS. We can record cassettes. You haven't seen one of those in a while. And from it, using a piece of hardware right over here, and it converts an analog signal into a digital signal. So you can convert these items into MOV or MP4, MP3 stuff your kids would understand or your little kids will understand. But pretty much, this is a way of preserving our heritage and having it continue on digitally.
I love that. So I can bring my personal tapes in and convert them here?
That's the plan, yes.
All right. I think I'm going to come back for this one, for sure.
The Octavia Lab is a digital media maker space that is free to use, and all you need is your library card. There might be some printing charges depending on the projects.
And if you're not feeling sure about what to actually do, well, you can always come to this machine, and there's a message of inspiration. In fact, you'll get a quote, along with even some suggestions on what you can work on.
So put on your creative hat and make your way down to the Octavia Lab, only at the Central Library in downtown Los Angeles.
For more info, log on to lapl.org/labs. Can the transformation of a mom-and-pop store help improve the health of an entire community near downtown LA? Well, Lupita's Corner Market owner says yes, as they reopen their doors with a much healthier menu.
A little more paint shelving and the stocking of merchandise, and Lupita's Market is almost ready for business, the business of making the community healthier.
Once a year, we do select one or two small markets to become a transformation. Right now, we're trying to catch up. We are bringing in some merchandise. We're bringing in fruits.
This was Lupita's Market just over six months ago, a dark, cramped mom-and-pop store on a street corner near downtown LA, where the snack du jour for kids coming in after school was often junk food. But Nusarango, her mother and family, who owned the store, wanted to change that and lead the way to healthier food choices.
A lot of our community, they find it really difficult to go to stores and travel miles away just to have either healthier food options. Having a community market that has everything that everybody needs is what we have become. It's a very prescient project for a lot of people, as it is to our family.
The Los Angeles Food Policy Council, which helps stores go healthier, stepped in, awarding Lupita's Market a chance at a complete store rehab through its Healthy Neighborhood Network Market Program. Now, $100,000 in renovations later, the market is ready to be reborn.
The basic menu is going to be affordable for the community, and they're going to have salads. We're going to have soups. The Healthy Neighborhood Market Network Program is to help small, big business store owners in underserved communities, specifically small market owners, to have healthy, fresh, affordable options. These are communities that are generally categorized as food deserts.
The project got a lot of help with pro bono work from the Gensler Architectural Firm and Build Group Construction.
We had this idea of farmer's market, so where you would have baskets of fruits and vegetables, and that's what we designed into the furniture in the front.
There's going to be seating out front behind the counter here. And the challenging part was the storefront walls. We had to actually tear it down.
For the kids who still expect to get their daily after-school snacks, Lupita's Market is offering curbside service during the renovation.
So the kids come even though you remind them?
Yeah, they, yeah. They told me, "Oh, my God, Lupita's no more. What happened?" And I said, "No, I'm here." So I want to say to everybody, "I'm here."
Oh, they are definitely here, better than ever. And bananas, oranges, tomatoes, and yogurt never looked so good on a shelf.
That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder, you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Let's protect our wildlife together. Please, no smoking in Griffith Park.
... the Consejo Municipal es martes, 26 de noviembre. Señora Presidenta, tenemos cuatro. Por favor, pase la lista. Diez miembros presentes y tenemos cuatro. Muchas gracias. Primer asunto del día, aprobación de las actas. Que sigue, resoluciones comunitarias para su aprobación. Con el segundo. Señor Presidente, el día de hoy es martes, y en este momento de saludo de la bandera, nos ponemos de pie para el saludo a la bandera, señora Rodríguez. Para el saludo de la bandera, todos se ponen de pie. Gracias, señor Presidente. Vamos a ver. Pónganle la mano derecha sobre el corazón. Juro libertad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos y por la República que representa una nación unida, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Gracias. Vamos ahora a continuar por la agenda. En este momento, señora Presidenta, señor presidente, debido al receso, le gustaría mandar todos los asuntos inmediatamente. Nos encantaría hacer eso. Y luego, punto uno al once es para audiencia pública. Tenemos tarjetas. Sí, hay tarjetas en todos los puntos. Bueno, el punto uno. Vamos a esperarnos para votar en los siguientes. Se abre la votación. Se cierra la votación con teo de votos. Once a favor. Gracias. Siga. Señor Presidente, el punto con ordenanzas, punto al siete, se van a llevar a cabo a menos que se consideran con doce miembros después. Punto doce al veintiuno son puntos en los cuales se ha llevado audiencia pública del reporte de comité, del comité para el veinte y veintiuno. Nos preparamos para votar sobre esos puntos. El señor Paran. Vamos a detener el dieciséis para el señor Paran. Y nos preparamos para votar sobre los asuntos que quedan. Abrimos la votación. Se cierra la votación con teo de votos. Once a favor. Continúa. Señor Presidente, los asuntos y ordenanzas se van a tener por una semana. Punto veintiuno al veintitrés, puntos en los cuales no se han llevado a audiencia pública se necesita diez votos para consideración o esa objeción. Ahora están ante nosotros. Tenemos tarjetas para estos asuntos. Señora Presidente, hay una tarjeta en el punto veintiuno y veintitrés que también se debían de divaracado para una moción de admienda. Nos vamos a preparar para los que sobran. Por favor, votamos, cerramos con teo de votos. Once a favor. Continúa. Señor Presidente, regresamos a las presentaciones especiales. Muchas gracias. Muy bien. La fiscalía y señora presidenta, según yo entiendo, no tenemos comentarios gemellerales. Vamos a cerrar comentario público. Vamos a tomar veintiuno, veinticinco. Tenemos al señora Diana, Diana Mendoza. Por favor, pase adelante. Sí, señora, bienvenida. Gracias. Buenos días. Dios viene a prestar a Mendoza. Y yo estoy manager for Fixle para que operen a los animalitos. Esto también requiere de residentes de bajo recurso, lo cual es difícil para cumplir con la ley, la cual es una muy buena ley, pero para poder llevar a cabo esto, le faltan los fondos. Esto que se creó, por lo cual estamos aquí en la audiencia, en la audiencia, de presupuesto para abogar para más fondos. Al cambiar este fondo, permitiría que hubiera más recursos para... al cambiar este fondo permitiría que hubiera más recursos para los residentes para que puedan para que ellos puedan operar los animalitos estas son las personas más vulnerables que no pueden esterilizar lo cual significa que reciben más penalizaciones y los gatos que no se están operando van a seguir repugnándose gracias por venir vamos a prepararnos y una presidenta para votar sobre este asunto se abre la votación se cierra la votación conteo de votos trece a favor vamos a continuar con el punto uno acá tenemos Terry Williams Terry Williams por favor pase adelante bienvenidos buenos días estoy aquí seis uno tres avenida he hablado con Tony con respecto a los para poder no poner esos embargos en las viviendas puede repetir la última parte señor William estoy aquí en nombre de Frankie Green para seis uno tres flight avenue en la ciudad de los ángeles he hablado con el departamento de finanzas Tony y han estado de acuerdo en no seguir en la hipoteca es la o el embargo más bien en la hipoteca cómo continuamos ese punto en una semana porque vamos a continuar ese punto por una semana sería tres de diciembre y podemos verificar esa información Tony está aquí vamos a no tenemos tiempo para ver todo esto pero vamos a remover esa acción del día de hoy y el personal también va a ser de comunicación gracias señor presidente la petición para continuar es uno acá al tres de diciembre uno G a diez de diciembre uno L al catorce de enero de dos mil veinte vamos a hacer eso y vamos a votar en lo que queda abrimos la votación cerramos la votación conteo de votos trece a favor señor presidente si nosotros podemos hacer otro voto para el departamento de seguridad y edificación para uno A al uno F para confirmar el embargo a uno H y uno G para recibirlo en el expediente vamos a abrir la votación cerrar la votación conteo de votos trece a favor quiere reconsiderar las ordenanzas de dos del tres a siete y doce a catorce vamos a votar en la reconsideración vamos a abrir la votación se cierra la votación conteo de votos trece a favor vamos a estar sobre los puntos cierre la votación conteo de votos doce a favor señora rodríguez señora rodríguez va a ser una presentación tiene la palabra
gracias buenos días colegas estoy orgullosa de estar aquí el día de hoy en honor a Harut Kambuchen que es un músico americano armenio americano que su carrera se amplía durante cuatro años y cuatro álbumes un aplauso para él por favor nació ayer en Armenia mil novecientos cincuenta y su madre le encantaba la música su familia vivió modestamente y no podía tomar lecciones pero siguió su sueño de llegar a ser un gran músico convenció a su mamá para comprarle una guitarra pero como izquierdista yo también lo soy como izquierdista estaba tocando de arriba para abajo y le decían el de la izquierda formó una banda Eric Buny en Armenia sin embargo al ser un joven armenio bajo en la regla soviética era imposible filtrar toda la música en el radio y la televisión Harut y su familia dejaron Armenia en mil novecientos setenta y cinco y para mil novecientos setenta y seis Harut había tomado la residencia en los ángeles en el corazón del pequeño Armenia y el este de hollywood aquí en los eeuu tuvimos libertad para expresarse su única manera se han obtenido el corazón de las personas donde quiera que viva es una estrella global en la comunidad armenia ampliando a muchos fanáticos los ángeles semanalmente hizo una historia llamándolo también el cantante de las bodas reconociendo cómo empezó su carrera cantando en bodas y bautizos además de ser músico tiene un gran historial de darle también a la comunidad después del terremoto en Armenia mil novecientos ochenta y ocho que mató veinticinco mil personas él dejó más de quinientos mil personas él tuvo un concierto en beneficio y había vivido en la guerra civil en Lábanon siempre consiguió su talento en beneficio de la humanidad como descendiente de sobrevivientes él ha continuado abogando por la educación casi cuatro años después de que llegó a los eeuu continúa tocando en varios lugares en el casino de pre y en el Kremlin Palace estoy orgullosa de declarar el día de hoy veintiséis de noviembre de dos mil diecinueve como Harut Kambuchen en la ciudad de los ángeles en ese momento me invitaría para dijera unas palabras señora rodríguez antes de que hagamos esto me gustaría que el señor que corriente hablara sobre esto si está bien gracias señora presidente aprecio mucho que se me hable hablar ahora porque nunca habría quería seguir las palabras de Kambuchen así que gracias por traer aquí alcancejo al señor Harut ya lo conocemos todos nosotros todos los miembros que han estado en varios eventos armenios lo he visto cómo se desempeña es adecuado que nosotros preparemos en nuestra comunidad en la ciudad de los ángeles en los eventos de la noche y quería hablar no solamente de su música que está una parte tan importante de la vida de la diáspora Armenia y en los ángeles quería hablar acerca de su instinto humanitario y cómo usa su talento y su fama y su popularidad para poder avanzar y las cosas más importantes de la comunidad señora rodríguez usted tiene la razón sobre su trabajo con respecto al terremoto Espetak y otros lugares donde fue tan devastador cuando miles de personas murieron instantáneamente en ese terremoto Armenia fue realmente no solamente el una bloqueada que sufrió en las manos de sus enemigos que afectaron la guerra con respecto al arte y hacer una transición de un estado social a un estado de democracia y apertura y todos estos retos que Armenia realmente fue devastador y como nosotros cuando estamos en todo esto de nuevo una y otra vez tienen sus presentaciones miles de veces levanta a esas personas tales esperanza y un momento en el que puedan que puedan celebrar hasta este día celebramos a Bob Hope como un gran americano por pasar de zonas de guerra lugares para poder elevar a las tropas no hay ninguna pregunta en mi mente el equivalente armenio es Dakar y lo que usted ha hecho por los armenios y lo que sigue haciendo por los armenios este día cada vez que hay un genocidio o conmemoración en la marcha de cada vez que nos hemos unido para exigir reconocimiento usted ha estado ahí en contra de levantar a las personas e inspirar a medida que nosotros sufrimos de independencia y libertad y seguridad de las personas una vez más usted está ahí luchando por los que necesitan el apoyo por dos esas razones incluso más de la esperanza que nos trae a una fiesta a un evento en esta comunidad donde usted toca es por eso mismo que esta ciudad y todas las ahora organizaciones le agradecen y aprecian su servicio y estoy tan contenta que la redacción a rodríguez le haya rendido honor el día de hoy damas y caballeros gracias yo vine en mil novecientos setenta y cinco cuando vinieron mis sueños yo me acuerdo más de treinta y nueve récords y concertos conciertos que solamente aquí en América gracias por todo de mi trabajo que Dios bendiga a los días de los venidas diásporas en todo el mundo y que Dios bendiga a los estados de América que quiero tanto muchas gracias gracias por haber entretenido el mundo y por haber traído la música en todos lados felicitaciones declaramos este día en sonor muchas gracias un gran aplauso gracias a usted muchas gracias vamos a esperar un momentito antes que creo que señor Bloomfield quería iniciar eso oh disculpa quería reconsiderar el punto principal uno que después de considerado para comendar este expediente vamos a hacer esto rápidamente para reconsideración y uno acá se abre la votación se cierra la votación se conteo de votos trece a favor y a menos que se haya una objeción se va a recibir señor Bloomfield pasamos gracias vamos a abrir a la votación cerrar la votación conteo de votos trece a favor sí señor punto dieciséis colegas entonces espero que sea controversial pero creo que es algo importante teníamos una o dos preguntas para traer pero lo que tiene que ver es para nuestro contrato de los muebles que siempre ha sido ante nosotros algunas veces desde que he sido el presidente de audiencias públicas hemos hecho la forma de renovar el que tenemos o tenemos un RFP para uno nuevo porque el contrato que tenemos es hasta el doscientos uno es un contrato de veintiún años se supone que tiene que revisarse en el dos mil siete pero no había sucedido así que queríamos que nosotros estuviéramos en tiempo del tiempo en el dos mil veintiuno cuando se venciera el contrato para revisar esto se puso se presentó ante el consejo para una nueva renovación y decidimos primero para negociaciones y si no podíamos obtener una respuesta satisfactoria pensamos que entonces podríamos pasar con el RFP antes nosotros tenemos ahora el segundo paso es para un RFP y solamente para reiterar una de las consideraciones como presidente hagamos esto en comité que el próximo principal de este contrato necesita ser de que así se trata muchas cosas de las cuales vamos a obtener de la ciudad pero a final de cuentas los muebles de la ciudad es para incentivar el tránsito público para que sea más cómodo para poder dar sombra y todas las facilidades que necesimos necesitamos y todos los desee los angelitos para poder el transporte público de esto se trata y el RFP el día de hoy vamos a autorizarlo el departamento para continuar a medida que hablamos acerca de oficialmente decirlo como un RFP así que el instinto insisto su apoyo en esto gracias señor paran gracias señor Corretse quería agradecerle señor Bloomfield para llevarlo a este punto yo no sé si hay muchas personas en los ángeles que están satisfechas con el contrato durante los últimos veinte años y hemos tenido la oportunidad de hacer lo correcto desde mi perspectiva del comité de transporte como miembro de metro y de aumentar el transporte público quiero asegurarme de que nosotros tenemos un compromiso en este nuevo contrato y que esto es mejorar la experiencia del tránsito para asegurarnos de que nosotros tengamos un buen sistema de refugio para transporte y cuál es su compromiso para como objetivo principal gracias como usted sabe las lagos de los ángeles ha transformado y se han declarado para todas y una de las cosas que realmente es darles soluciones holísticas y lo que nosotros podemos ver que nosotros necesitamos es cómo podemos nosotros pasar del trabajo a la escuela al parque y poder dar esa conexión no solamente es los árboles y las sombras y los muebles sino que esto tenemos que ver qué es lo que nos lleva a este comité como mencionamos el señor Bloomfield lo que necesitamos crear es más refugios para que haya más sombra en los refugios porque sabemos que nosotros en los ángeles está mucho más caro especialmente más caliente especialmente está Fernando y queremos traer en Los Ángeles está mucho más caro especialmente más caliente especialmente está Fernando y queremos traer también tener más refugios públicos especialmente en las áreas de mayor tránsito y en las áreas que están expuestas al sol esa es la prioridad así que lo que ya estemos empezado el proceso trabajando con MTA y TOT para ver cuál es el las paradas que tienen mejores y estás trabajando con ellas en las áreas que reciben la mayor exposición al sol y estas son las cosas que nosotros queremos y hacer las prioridades esta solamente una cosa además de eso usar la tecnología para implementar los refugios y darles a las personas acceso más que solamente la sombra de los autobuses y nosotros nos damos cuenta que toda esta información necesitamos que darles a los residentes se tiene que hacer por la medio de tecnología y además tenemos que tener algo que es algo que nosotros podemos ajustar en nuestro sistema para lidiar con esto es un contrato a largo plazo para ajustar la medida que continuamos estas son cosas que no sabemos que queremos integrar esto va a ser flexible pero queremos asegurarnos de enfocarnos en dar nuestros residentes un mejor impuesto para salvar eso para que podamos que mover en la ciudad utilizando el sistema de transporte porque nosotros sabemos que nuestra meta es acceso seguro para residentes especialmente los que tienen mayor exposición y mayores si está bajando cuando necesitamos que aumente y nosotros nosotros si no hacemos que más personas usen el sistema público va a ser terrible para el mundo así que tenemos que dar carriles en nuestra ciudad y necesitamos tener esta experiencia antes y después del autobús para que sea más seguro y conveniente y se trata de no solamente extenga esta información y me complace que está trabajando con metro y preguntarle a usted cosas adicionales para trabajar con metro y para coordinar en el diseño y para tomar la dirección de metro pero metro está también tiene una iniciativa de autobuses que tiene habilidades que es significativo para nosotros y me gustaría reunirme con metro de Washington y si a medida que esto continúa esto sería una prioridad y a medida que esto continúa esto es posiblemente sería una oportunidad para poder ayudar a recordar algunas de las tareas tenemos que asegurarnos de que no solamente sea esto sino que todos los árboles pero lo que estamos trabajando con metro sobre esto también es ajustar también las rutas de los autobuses en todo el planeta necesitamos tener esta información para que nosotros aportemos los sombras los refugios estoy trabajando con Phil con esto todo lo que puede hacer para ayudar en ambos formas si pueden compartir información hasta que se vote por eso me complace que es flexible porque tal vez en eso cambie en unos 20 años señor 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 Pone el comentario con respecto a los usuarios y a lo que ha bajado y la falta de acomodaciones que tenemos para las personas sugeriría que a medida que decidimos la ciudad y las bancas que nosotros movamos las barreras las hemos removido en nuestro distrito no tenemos la experiencia de este mito de que las personas van a dormir ahí no van a dormir ahí que va a contribuir a las actividades de personas en hogar debido a las barras y nosotros pensamos que en varias experiencias que las removamos las me parecen un poco ofensivas y no es cómodo para los usuarios que en mi distrito que tengo muchos los padres quieren mediar con sus niños y quieren que los niños ayuden con las bolsas del supermercado y esas barras interfieren con eso por lo que son incómodas me parece que también las personas de la tercera edad son incómodas y las personas que tienen obesas también no es bueno para ellos yo creo que la teoría el propósito es que de alguna vez algunas veces íbamos a deteriorar ciertas actividades de las personas e indigentes yo no creo que esto sea el caso y no ha sido el caso durante años segundo quería decirles a ustedes mi observación en mi distrito necesitamos mucho más sombra y refugios simplemente es inalecuado mi distrito es más joven y mayor que otros y particularmente de las personas tienen dificultad con que no tienen los refugios y la sombra adecuada para los que están aquí con el MTA tal vez pensamos en algunas otras cosas y esto sería también tener baños públicos para los autobuses es una idea radical radical para que usen los centros donde están estos baños para mí sería también cuestión de iluminación necesitamos tener que tener también iluminación para que la gente se sienta segura y aprecio su consideración con respecto al calor y como ustedes saben mi trabajo sobre el triángulo está ahí nada más y es tan popular ahora que no los puedo agradecer pero el triángulo es muy instructivo en términos de dar una oportunidad para ver a los patrones y prácticas y esto es algo llave es una clave para las donde las barras se han abierto ha tenido un gran éxito en el noroeste hemos movido algunos de los árboles para acomodar a los paradas que ha sido una cuestión considerable gracias por el trabajo gracias señor Señor ya no tenemos nadie para hablar en esto vamos a votar se cierra conteo de votos 13 a favor se aprueba la moción punto 23 comentario público sobre esto señor Herman seguido por el señor Greenspan bueno digamos que la cuestión de los animales muertos yo he llamado a varios seminarios y una de las cosas que yo puedo decir es que lo recogen un día un perro un gato y por qué no ponemos un microchip para poder avisarles a los a los dueños y si no va a regresar a casa pero es mejor decirles que dejarlos esperando sin ninguna esperanza una de las cosas ya que estamos hablando de animales gatos y todo lo demás hay un animal muerto que necesitamos hablar y son los prunes que están muertos señor Herman por medio de estábamos haciendo mociones en para poder distraer esto puede por favor considerar que se le ha dado una advertencia para que termine y esta va a ser su última podemos votar en el punto 23 se abre la votación se cierra conteo de votos 13 a favor se aprueba que nos queda ante nosotros mientras tanto hay otro anuncio estamos esperando el punto 4 anuncios vamos a tomar un descanso de cinco minutos regresamos en cinco minutos dame de tus condolencias porque mi teléfono se murió no no es que es que el pobre fíjate que yo no estaba tratando de cerrarlo porque tenía un crack entonces que lo abro y que se me abre todo y puras cositas como lo que tiene las computadoras chips y todo eso y yo what the hell is this entonces yo dije qué es eso y cuando la traté de poner de voltearlo nada totalmente muerto entonces me fui corriendo al a la tienda no le dije mire se me murió mi teléfono ay yo como una histérica no pues mis clientes y todo y me dice dónde está y se me olvidó y fui y entonces me dijo no importa me dijo le podemos se puede volver y de todos modos le podemos dar otro ahorita y o si yo dijo le puede poner un sim card y poderle poner la información le dije pero ahorita no tengo el teléfono de nadie estoy básicamente incomunicada y por eso no me había comunicado animé a detestar porque también no pues está bien comunicada como la iba a llamar no tenía sin su teléfono porque dejé el viejo y el viejo ya ni servía porque estaba muerto nada o sea ellos lo recuperan todo del iCloud no del teléfono y la bestia y se me olvidó el password así que tenemos que lidiar con eso tengo que regresar a la tienda oye qué vas a hacer hoy no tienes querías querías verme ahí ahí él fue a Costco también porque ahí estaba el Team Mobile donde nosotros vamos en Costco entonces vi las mesas para vender si tú quieres venderlos las cosas esas quería comprar una mesa pero mi hijo me dijo que en el carro que vamos no cabía porque fuimos con un amigo que tiene una niña que tiene una sillita pues el tuyo es grande cabrá la mesa uh porque yo te pagaría pues la gasolina y todo no para que vamos a recoger la mesa voy a comprar dos mesas dos sillas porque yo estoy en serio de vender todo ah y sería que me podrías hacer ahí para hacer unos mandaditos así rápidos porque no quiero ir después del día del Thanksgiving de texto detesto detesto la gente que sale a comprar el Rock Friday lo detesto como no tienes paz me quisiera ir a me quisiera ir a una cueva y tengo que comprar un pavo un pollo un pavo de enlacen que es totalmente orgánico ya quedan solo diez mi hijo lo va a hacer entonces te quería preguntar si no tiene nada que hacer si me llevas a hacer mandados si yo te lleno el tanque y yo te lleno el tanque o te doy plata pues, y además te debo. Le pregunta, llámame a este teléfono ahora, ¿es el mismo? Solamente que ya llamé a Marlini para que me pudiera dar tus teléfonos. No, nada que ver, no... Claro. Telemarketing, ya. Estoy en Siri Council, o qué corazoncito, tengo que volver. Lláname en cuanto puedas, chao, chao. Hay un informe que va a venir una mañana con... El jueves, el martes y el jueves. Sin embargo, los refugios no van a estar abiertos hasta el primero de diciembre, así que nosotros primeramente deberíamos de ver las determinaciones conforme el Código de Gobierno, Q4952. Y si se aprueba, entonces vamos a tener un comentarios y creo que señor Banan quería hablar sobre este asunto. El primer voto sobre las determinaciones, si podemos abrir, por favor. El conteo, votos, conteo de votos, 13 a favor. ¿Tenemos algún comentario público? Creo que sí, vamos al comentario público. No hay tarjetas, gracias. Se cierra sobre ese asunto. Gracias señor presidente, gracias a la fiscalía por hacer las determinaciones. Se notó que esto era unas condiciones severas que vinieron aquí a Los Ángeles. Las temperaturas están cada vez más bajas y al igual que el tiempo, especialmente el día de Acción de Gracias. Y como si notó también los de emergencia, las mayores de ellas no van a estar abiertas el primero de diciembre. Así que queremos abrirlas algunas, pero no todas de ellas, en algunos días o tal vez realmente para el miércoles. Pero muchas partes de la ciudad todavía no van a estar cubiertas como mucho de nosotros experimentamos en nuestro distrito recientemente. El departamento de emergencia tiene la habilidad de abrir los designados centros de evacuación para los refugios que han sido expresados por desastres naturales. Entonces lo que estamos haciendo hoy en esta moción es un par de cosas diferentes. El señor Corian y yo hemos estado presentando que el departamento de emergencia y el de transporte de parques y recreación, unificados con el centro para los indigentes y las servicios generales y otras agencias, habrán refugios de emergencia para las personas que están indigentes hasta el primero de diciembre, el primero formal que lo vamos a tener. Y Laza también ha estado trabajando con las entidades para que con las personas que están sufriendo de exposición a los elementos, además con personas a las cuales hemos llegado y también les pedimos que el centro de respuesta reporte con las agencias hacia nosotros sobre los recursos que son necesarios para ampliar y continuar usando centros de emergencia si el programa de emergencia de refugio excede su capacidad y además instruir al departamento de que tome todos los pasos para proteger a los residentes, incluyendo los centros de tormenta. De hecho, los colegas ahora va a ser frío, va a estar muy húmedo y las personas van a morir como resultado de esas condiciones a menos que tomemos acción, con un voto unánime para instruirle al departamento de que pueda asegurarse, de que se pueda abrir los centros que nosotros podramos. Gracias. Gracias señor Banan, yo quiero una pregunta. Nosotros pensamos que podemos hacer esto porque es de mucho... No tenemos mucho tiempo, ¿sí lo podemos hacer a tiempo? Ya hemos tenido conversaciones en preparación con Laza y hemos empezado con las mociones y conversaciones que hemos tenido y como usted y yo ya hemos hablado hace algunas semanas, pueden obrar un centro de emergencia en algunas horas con las mismas estatísticas para las personas que están en las calles sin techo, ese es el mismo tipo de desastre natural como un incendio. Y si puede obtener toda la información, yo creo que sería enviarla a todas las oficinas del consejo para enviarlas y esperamos que algunas de ellos llenen, lleguen a las personas para que reciban los servicios. Si nosotros tenemos que mandarlo inmediatamente, gracias. Vamos a votar, se vota, se cierra, conteo de votos, 13 a favor, se aprueba. Entonces eso es urgente, inmediatamente, en cuanto pueda. Gracias. ¿Tenemos votar formalmente? No me acuerdo cómo lo llamamos. No fue una categoría. Escuché, es súper urgente, pero no sé si existe. Bueno, vamos a votar sobre la segunda versión. Se abre la votación, se cierra, conteo, 13 a favor. Y eso se aprueba, vamos a hacer esto con todo, solo urgencia posible. Señora presidenta, ¿hay algo más ante nosotros? Moción para publicar y remisión. Algún anuncio, miembros, y si no. Señor Corian, gracias señor presidente, solamente quería anunciar que la mañana del Thanksgiving vamos a llevar a cabo una de sus recaudaciones de fondos que se llama Trump Stick Dash y todas las personas que desean apoyar el trabajo importante que hacemos en el valle, en el valle de San Fernando y a la población puede levantarse en la mañana y disfrutar. Se empieza a las siete de la mañana y empieza a las ocho y media en la esquina de Chander y Langresham. Se pueden registrar ese día, frente y pueden obtener más información, trumpstick-dash-la.com, org. Gracias señor Corian, algún otro anuncio y si no a una moción para concluir la reunión. Vamos a empezar con el señor Ruth.
Gracias señor presidente, y como ustedes pueden ver, tengo aquí varios líderes de la comunidad, familia y tenemos al departamento de bomberos, Chief Everett, que representa a la estación 76 en Silver Lake, tenemos a Ches Asporo, que del área de Silver Lake, en Oro S, tenemos a Marco Pérez, director del departamento de las personas de la tercera edad, a Michelle, que es pertenente de la región de Metro para Recreación y Parques. Tenemos muchas personas de Silver Lake, de Griffith Park, incluyendo Victor Pierce, presidente, Stephanie Vending, presidente anterior, Silvia McRae, secretaria. Todos están aquí y mucho más incluido mi predecesor, concejal Tom Lavanch. Quién está aquí. A medida que celebramos y reconocemos la legendaria pilar en la comunidad, a medida que nos reunimos en Selatomérico, ella también la acompañan muchos de los miembros de la familia y sus niños y sus nietos que la reconocen al final. Pero Selatomérico, se le llamaba Lía, nació en Florence, Italia. Lía fue una quinta generación, creció en una familia con dos hermanas y un hermano. Durante la Segunda guerra mundial vivió momentos difíciles pero siempre expresó su amor por música y libros. De 1948, en Migroamérica, llegó a Nueva York y se dio cuenta de que Los Ángeles fuera el lugar correcto para ella y tomó un bus a la costa oeste, llegó a Los Ángeles en un viernes y el siguiente lunes se había inscrito en la escuela para aprender inglés. Lía siguió su pasión de cantar y muchas veces cantó en Los Ángeles hasta que conoció a su esposo Sabero, Saberio, quien estaba trabajando en ese momento como correspondiente en Italia y en un programa de radio. Vivieron en Silver Lake donde vivieron durante 41 años y también criaron cuatro niños y tuvieron seis nietos. En 1999, Lía se preguntó por qué no había actividades para las personas de la tercera edad. Para resolver eso, tuvo su... tomó su iniciativa, fue tocando puerta a puerta y presentó su inquietud al concejal, Jackie Goldberg. Incluso antes de Tom Lavanch y debido a su persistencia, el club se formó en el 2000 y todavía continúan hasta el día de hoy, lo cual ahora se llama Griffith Park Adult Community Club y da actividades, clases para más de 350 seniors. Ella estaba muy orgullosa de estar en el club y en el exito, a medida que lo vio crecer a 400 miembros. Ella pudo también tomar clases creativas donde escribió varios poemas, historias y canciones. También se recordó participando y Lía también pasó esto a sus niños, dos de sus niños trabajando para la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Uno es el de la LAPD y murió el 13 de septiembre a la edad de 93. Ella sobrevivió a sus cuatro niños que están aquí con nosotros, Dino, Stella y sus nietos y Tony también. Y sus niños entrados, claro que Mia y Doménico y TJ, que muchos de ellos están aquí el día de hoy y creo que Lía va a ser especialmente contenta de saber que Griffith Park, el club que realmente ha crecido, hemos estado trabajando mucho para ampliar este establecimiento y en los próximos años esperamos ampliarlo en toda la calle para que nosotros podemos dar más servicios a las personas de Silver Lake y porque ya han crecido Silver Lake y Los Feliz y debido a todos los miembros de la comunidad y adultos en esa área. Así que les agradecemos a ella y a todos los servicios, a todos los que ella quiso y por lo cual terminamos esa reunión en su memoria, gracias. Gracias señor Ruth. Hacia mi derecha, señor Lía. Me gustaría terminar también en la memoria de Oxford, Daniel fue solamente 28 años cuando terminó en un accidente en Northridge en 20 de noviembre. Aunque la vida fue llena de amor, de vivir. Te gustaría ice cream en Waffles, hamburguesas y jugaba, traguadas con sus amigos. Su autismo limitó su habilidad para participar en el mundo en forma que la mayoría de los adultos hacen. Nunca pesaron que su autismo como una condición que se pudiera curar más lo vieron como un regalo que se les da a ciertas personas por lo que podrían enfocarse intensamente en resolver los problemas del mundo. Fue voluntario también en la oficina en la oficina de la biblioteca y también quería ayudar en la causa del compromiso para poder reparar un mundo roto. El 5 de marzo de 2013 estaba en un carro con su madre Janet, un maestro, una maestra de Reshirahasko que murió en ese accidente, pero la vida de Nate sobrevivió psicológicamente. Fue real y su mamá y papá fueron también periodistas y se consuelan unos a los otros. Se encontraron una conexión entre padre e hijo y se convirtieron misércoles amigos aliados en otro del mundo. Ahora trágicamente, desafortunadamente, de nuevo en su familia y amigos con este dolor de perder a un amigo. Nate también deja a Elizabeth Brand, su hermana, sus tíos, tías Elizabeth Oxford, Colstein, Dr. David, Cheryl Brand, Stan Brand y Gloria Squirt y otras familias que son parte de Washington State. También se siente por todas las comunidades que responden con expresión de amor. Nate tuvo una vida corta pero su amor llenó los corazones de muchas de sus familias y de la comunidad y las ciudades. Así que lo vamos a extrañar y nunca lo vamos a olvidar. Los servicios se van a llevar a cabo esta tarde en Mount Sinai en Simi Valley. Que crezcan en paz. Gracias señor Lía. Yo sé, conozco a la señora Brand muy bien y her friend que fue muy bien periodista, así que siento mucho de haber escuchado esta tragedia. La misma cosa, si puedes agregarme a lo mismo, gracias. A mi derecha. A mi izquierda. Antes de que terminemos, me gustaría que el señor Herman estaba cantando en la rotonda a dos pies, que era difícil escucharle. Gracias por aclaración. Si no hay otro asunto ante nosotros, se levanta la sesión.
...
So you can never be too prepared, especially in the city of Los Angeles.
Now, once that wildfire has broken out, I know from personal experience that sometimes it's confusing as to what to do. Because you hear conflicting media reports, your neighbors are saying one thing. What, tell us what we really should be, what should be going through our minds when this happens? I know you addressed this a little bit, but let's take it step by step. So we know that the fire is advancing and you're trying to monitor media reports, but not sure if they're accurate, up to date, that kind of thing.
Well, basically what you're describing is what we train all our firefighters is to enhance your situational awareness. Now, the best way the public can do that is to go to our website, lafd.org. And I have to reemphasize that point I made earlier, sign up for the alerts. The notify LA alert will give you advance warning and that'll direct you to lafd.org, which has evacuation maps and a brief description of whatever incident may be occurring. In addition to all of that, we're using the wireless emergency alert system. So if you're in that impacted area, we put a geofence around that and you'll get a message on your cellphone. It's, you don't have to sign up for that, that's going to be automatic from us. So there's multiple redundant ways to get situational awareness, notify LA, the wireless emergency alert system and by monitoring media.
Now, when a person knows that they should evacuate, how does that occur? Do firefighters go into the neighborhood or tell us how that works?
It depends how much time we have. Sometimes there's not enough time, we want people to shelter in place. Stay in your homes, we're going to make a defense right here. If there's time, we're going to use LAPD to get out in advance of the fire and to evacuate people. We did that at the Saddle Ridge Fire. So it depends on the incident characteristics, on terms of what type of evacuation mode we will take. You'll either shelter in place or need to leave.
Now, after the fire is over and in the event that your home is destroyed, what kind of help or assistance might there be for people in that terrible situation?
That is a very difficult situation. Many people have never experienced a loss of their home. So in that area, once again, if we go to lafd.org, there is disaster recovery information. We do have an emergency preparedness handbook in there. It's very detailed about how to go about making a claim with your insurance adjuster, what the Red Cross can do for you on a temporary basis. We try to help you, the firefighters do, by passing out save cards. These cards are worth $250 each and help pay for immediate needs like immediate lodging or food. So if you go to the website, there'll be good information on how to proceed with a claim.
And we were talking before about the free classes that the fire department offers. Can you give us some detail as to what you would learn in this class and how you would sign up for it?
Absolutely. The Community Emergency Response Team is a seventeen and a half hour course that they present over a period of seven weeks. And they cover areas such as basic first aid, how to shut down utilities, how to assist the fire department in large scale disasters. During the Northridge earthquake, I had some CERT volunteers knock on the door of my fire station and I put them to work and what they did is walk up and down streets shutting off gas lines when they saw or heard a leak. So go to our website at lafd.org and you can find more information about it and you'll learn how to sign up for it.
Now, let's go back to the firefighting activities and the equipment that you have. I understand there's some good news in that you have some new equipment. I believe there is a handheld device that allows firefighters to see in smoke-filled rooms or areas more easily. Tell us about that equipment and your aerial equipment and what you have in place now for your firefighting needs.
Absolutely. The thermal imager camera, we had one large camera about this size and the captain would hold on to it when they would go inside a structure. And in March of this year, we purchased a thousand of these cameras and they're about the size of your cellphone. And every on-duty firefighter has a tick, thermal imager camera. What the tick allows you to do is to go into a home or a large warehouse with zero visibility and you can use the tick to find trapped victims or to find a way out if you get detached from our hose line. Our hose line is our traditional means of our connection to the outside. If you're in a bad situation, you find the hose line and then crawl out. Well, now the tick will, will see that, you'll see the differential in temperature because it's all about heat temperatures. The tick allows us to increase firefighter safety as well as the ability to find people, sometimes kids who are hiding in a zero visibility environment.
Let's talk about the use of drones with your department.
Drones are something that we brought into the department about three years ago and we had to develop policy to ensure that our commissioners and the public were secure with how they would be used. And that's, that's happened. We use drones for training, we use drones for incidents like in a brush fire. We'll wait like in the later phases of it to find the hotspots that exist. When I can fly a drone instead of a helicopter, it saves the hours that we put on the helicopter's motor because after they reach 100 hours, they have to go in for maintenance and the fuel that we burn and then the fatigue on the pilots. So the drones have been a great addition to our capabilities. They do have infrared, infrared allows us to find those hotspots and they become a great tool for the fire department.
Any other equipment that you'd like to discuss and let the public know that you have in place?
Now we have things like the automated vehicle locator system. So now we know where all our units are by looking on a screen and we're able to track their physical location. We have the Wi-Fi technology that allows us to predict where brush fires are going to travel within minutes. We're connected to Pulse Point, so the member of the public can download the Pulse Point app and be alerted when we're responding to an incident where they're, where they live. The most recent addition to our fleet in terms of brush fires has been the helicopters. We got two new helicopters in the last two years, it's the Augusta AW139. And the helicopter effectiveness on brush fires is critical. Now we have five of these medium-sized helicopters that we can immediately deploy if we feel that we have a significant brush threat. In the most recent fire, the Saddle Ridge Fire, we immediately launched all our available helicopters. We do have a leased hila tanker for us between August and January. And we have access to two super scoopers that are here starting September to the end of the year.
Chief, let's talk about the helipad over at the Olive View Center. Can you tell us a little bit more about what's happening there?
The Olive View helipad was reopened a few months ago and it was destroyed in the Sayer Fire of 2008, I believe. It was very good timing because we use that helipad at the Saddle Ridge Fire. That allows us the capability to have up to four helicopters refueled or adding water to their, their water tanks at the same time. The helipad is right behind Olive View Hospital. It was a great location and it was a true partnership between the city and county of LA to provide the funds to reopen that helipad. So we're very grateful for the, the support there and hopefully we won't need to use it again for a while, but it was very valuable in fighting the Saddle Ridge Fire.
You have a really tough job and you're doing a wonderful job with everything that you're fighting the fires, etc. What more does your department need in terms of resources, in terms of equipment and then public education?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I have to say that we're in a very good position right now because of Mayor Garcetti's support, our city council and our fire commission. We've received record-setting budgets in the last five years. That's allowed us to catch up with our staffing, our apparatus, our helicopter fleet. We've enhanced our technology. I think our greatest need right now is something we're contemplating putting on the ballot next year, a fire station bond. Our fire station infrastructure is very old and we have some needs at certain fire stations to replace them, to make them bigger, to make them more effective and efficient. Our Skid Row station needs to be replaced. It's too small because of the call load activity in Skid Row is so high. We need to put more resources in that fire station, but we can't because it's too small and it was built many, many years ago. We have another station in Westwood that was built around World War II. It's deteriorating. So there's examples like that throughout the city and be looking for a bond initiative next year sometime.
Now, we talked about what the fire department needs to do its job and it's doing a great job. But let's talk about how the rest of us, the public, can support the fire department. You have what is called an adopt a station program. Tell us about that.
Many, many years ago, in probably the early 90s, communities got behind their local station and started contributing money to provide enhancements at the fire station. And weight equipment, cardiovascular, stair masters, that kind of thing. Over the years, it's morphed into our foundation, our LAFD Fire Foundation. That now has taken that program over and people can donate to the foundation and the foundation will provide requests at the fire station level for things like exercise equipment, sometimes tools and equipment for the fire trucks, refrigerators, industrial washers for our turnout coats that need to be washed after a structure fire. That's a big effort in itself. We call them extractors. So if anybody's interested in supporting the LAFD, they can go to our, our foundation at supportlafd.org.
Let's talk a little bit about the Saddle Ridge Fire. Tell us the scope of it and can you bring us up to date on what's happening?
Absolutely. Last week, it was a Thursday night about nine o'clock, I was at home watching the news and I saw the report of the fire and I saw a visual from a news helicopter. And we had already been pre-deploying additional firefighters because of the weather. We knew it was a bad brush index, which means a high threat of a brush fire. When I saw that visual image, I thought we were going to lose several hundred homes because of the wind and where it was at in Silmar. It started in Silmar. A lot of brush in that area and it was blowing towards the southwest. So we activated everything that we've been preparing for, for year-round on brush fires. We had our pre-deployed resources, we started initiating the wireless emergency alerts and the notify LA alerts. We got mutual aid from our partners, LA County Fire Department and Cal Fire and Angeles National Forest Firefighters. We were able to mitigate that incident. We lost 17 homes. We saved thousands. We lost 17 homes and the loss of one home is a big disappointment. Historical fires, we had a fire there in that area in 2008. We call it the Sayer Fire. We lost 500 homes. So I'm very proud of our firefighters to save the thousands that they did save and we're always looking to see how can we do better next time. This week, we'll be doing some after-action meetings to have discussions about what can we do better. We do that every time there's a major incident to self-critique how we performed. I'm very proud that we did a very good job.
Did anything come to mind as you looked and said, well, what, what we could do better? Is there anything that came to mind as you?
Well, I'm pleased, I'm pleased to say that there's no major area where I thought we had a failure. I think it's an incremental improvement on everything that we're already doing. The technology is continuing to get better. We use a thing called Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi projects the path of a fire using real-time weather information, known fire corridors and existing brush indicators. And we validate that with a program we call FIRIS. And FIRIS basically is two fixed-wing aircraft who fly above the helicopters around the perimeter of the brush fire and validate the path of the fire. Once we know that, we can project which areas, if any, need to be evacuated, which we load down on lafd.org. So when the public gets this alert, they can go to the map knowing that that information is as accurate as possible.
Well, thank you for doing a wonderful job for saving so many homes and so many lives in Los Angeles. Thank you for joining us today.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm very proud of the men and women of Los Angeles City Fire Department. I believe we're the finest fire department in the world and I say that on a regular basis because I truly believe that. And we're that way because of the people that we have. We have a great group of men and women who are dedicated professionals, dedicated to the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you. It's been great having you on our program. And thank you for joining us for this edition of LA Currents. I'm Saieda Pagan.
It's time again for Adopt a Pet Today. I'm Bill Crowe and today we are at the North Central Shelter on Lacy Street, just off 26th Street, just off Figueroa Avenue, just off the 110. But if that's not convenient for you, there are five other LA City shelters. You can find all six locations at laanimalservices.com. That's laanimalservices.com. Now, in just a minute, we're going to show you some great dogs and some great cats. One I'm sure that will be perfect for your family. But if you don't see one on the show today that you want to adopt, you can go to that website and also see all of the animals in all six LA City shelters. There are literally thousands of them waiting for a great home to be with your family. So please go to that website, laanimalservices.com. There's a wealth of information about animal care and also about volunteering and donating to the shelters. There are so many ways you can help animals.
Reyna and I are here in North Central and we have Dallas, about a nine-year-old, kind of a long-term resident here, a little over a year and a half. And Reyna described him as somber.
Somber and calm, but, but he is a little, and he's, I love that he's so calm and sweet. But he is somber, you know, he's been here quite a while.
Come here Dallas, come here Dallas, turn around. You need to see, show your handsome face on the camera.
And, but everybody loves him. He's a favorite here. But he's nine years old.
Yeah.
And, you know, a black nine-year-old dog who's older and so he gets overlooked. But talk about a sweetheart and what's his A number, Sally?
A number, 1426317. And let me tell you the best part of Dallas's story.
Tell me.
He is eligible for the Paws of Life Training Program. So if you adopt him, he gets six weeks of free training with Paws for Life.
That's awesome. Now, Paws for Life is a wonderful, wonderful special program that has been established with the Lancaster Prison. And we recently saw a whole big program on this and this has been a program that has been going on for over five years. And the placements they've made and the adoptions they've made through this program and the, the wonderful training they get is, is just fabulous. The prisoners have been taught how to train these dogs. They live with them and these dogs are transformed and it's, and then they get to go into their home fully trained.
Okay, so this is Dallas. Dallas, you get to go get some training. So anybody who gets Dallas, A1426317, come see this beautiful boy at North Central. This is Elliot, another Paws for Life program candidate. If you adopt him, he gets to go be trained for six weeks. It's an awesome program. He loves his ball, maybe a little possessive. A number 1813831. Elliot's about seven years old, a lot more active than Dallas.
Yeah, and he's a beautiful boy. He's friendly. He just got his eyeball on a ball and that was all, all she wrote. So, um, not knowing this dog, not working with this dog, I'm not going to reach down and take this from him. I, you know, redirect him first, but we're just letting him enjoy it right now and that's fine. Sweet boy. The fact that he's already been evaluated to go for Paws for Life means he's a friendly, engaging guy and training would be wonderful and using a ball and toys and training would be awesome for him. He's beautiful. He's seven years old, another long-termer and another middle-aged boy. And they need to get out. They need to get out.
And it's such a wonderful program for the dogs and also for the people in Lancaster.
Absolutely.
Elliot's loving his ball and he's at North Central. He's in the Paws for Life Training Program. What else can we say? Awesome. Okay, we've got Tink Tank or Tinker or Tank, depending on what you want to call him.
Yep, or you could change his name, whatever you want to do.
Or you can change his name. 1780586. So the long-term dogs, he's been here almost two years, but he's such a great dog. Paws for Life has selected him to be in their training program. You guys have to appreciate how good that program is. Six weeks of training with absolutely professional trainers.
You're drooling. You're a drooler.
Six weeks. He's an awesome dog. He'll be even more awesome after his training.
Yep.
Seven years old. He's like, oh, late teen.
Yes, he's, he's got a lot of life left in him yet and, you know, they're, they're gonna train him and get him situated. So what that means is you adopt this dog, he'll go straight into the program and come back trained for you and come back into your home and, and acclimate, you know, already trained and be a good boy. And he's already a nice dog. I mean, they assess these dogs to do that. So he'll be great. So he'll be great.
Okay, this is Tink Tank at North Central, vaccinated, microchipped, sterilized, ready to go home. A 178-0586.
Good boy, Tank.
This is Marlin, Raina. A 174-1979. We're doing, we're featuring long-term residents at North Central today. And these are residents that the Paws for Life program have selected as being dogs absolutely eligible for their training program, six weeks of free training. You guys, you can't miss that and it's a wonderful organization. He's been here for two years. The shelter goes, we've got great dogs. They've lived here for a while, but you know what? They're great dogs and we're going to feature them.
Come on, look up. Yay, good job. And he's beautiful. All of these guys, you get them cleaned up and fed right, you know? The shelter does the best they can here. They do a good job. They keep these guys, you know, here and house them for two years, you know, because they're good dogs, you know?
Right, right.
But they need a home and they need to be taken care of with, you know, properly and the Paws for Life helps with that. So come get this boy, get some free training. He's beautiful.
And he's friendly.
And he's friendly.
Again, another dog that neither Raina nor I have met. And he comes out here with a nice tail wag going, hi you guys, I like you. My A number is 174-1979. My name, by the way, is Marlin, if I didn't mention that.
Marlin Brando.
Marlin Brando, handsome boy. North Central, come meet me and get some free training for me. Raina, you are handling James Winston.
James Winston.
And I want to make sure you call him by his right name, James Winston. And look at, he's been in a foster home and he's also available for the Paws for Life program.
He goes, I want more cookies.
He's friendly.
Friendly, come here.
His medium activity for an eight-year-old. He's a doll.
Good boy. You're just so happy. He goes, I want the cookies. I want to sit for my treats. Good boy.
My A number is 178-2040.
Good, good job.
Oh my gosh, look at how focused he is, Raina.
Look at me, good job. Well, he's been in foster, I think, a couple times, she said. So he's been homes, you know, he's been in homes. He's probably had some minimal training and very engaging and friendly boy. Yeah, I know, I know, I hear you.
Tell her, James Winston, do not call me by my short name. Call me James Winston. I'm at North Central. I've been vaccinated, microchipped and sterilized. I know some commands, but I'll learn more because I'm in the Paws for Life program and I'm just Mr. Friendly.
I know, you're food motivated. That's very nice. That's very nice. Very sweet boy, very engaging, very, you know, willing to learn, obviously, and get some training on this boy. He's beautiful.
178-2040. James Winston, you're a cutie. And a volunteer favorite. Raina has Dale. He is not in the training program, but Raina, I'd say he probably needs some training.
Oh, he needs training, but he's just happy. Yeah, happy and big and strong. Hello. And I know it and just doesn't have manners yet, but oh my God, you know, he just can...
Could he have manners?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, could have manners, absolutely. He's about seven years old. He's an active seven-year-old. If you want a dog to play with you in the backyard, maybe go for long walks, maybe go for hikes, I think Dale might be the dog.
He's the boy.
A 1800300. Active seven-year-old.
Beautiful boy.
Gorgeous, gray and white. His name's Dale.
Come on over here.
He said, my name is Dale and I'm a busy boy.
He goes, I just, I've been out in the yard now and I want to just run and play. He's a good boy. Come see this beauty.
We have probably the opposite personality to Dale, who was just out here, but she's only been here a couple of months. She might have had an owner and she's new to this environment. It's scary.
Yeah, she's more timid and a little fearful of the situation. Sweet girl.
Yes.
But again, you just got to go slow and help her acclimate a little bit. And she's a lovely, lovely girl and she obviously was bred. You know, she had pups at some point and who knows how long ago that was and that could be part of a trauma, you know, being separated too soon, maybe. But she's a lovely girl, Maggie.
She's seven years old. Her A number is 188-1353. She's the smallest of the big dogs that we've had.
Yeah, what a dear.
She's a sweetheart.
Sweetheart.
She would be, she's seven. She probably is not this mellow once she acclimates, but maybe a more quiet dog than, say, Dale.
Yeah, absolutely. She's a dear. She's a dear girl. My heart goes out to these little timid, overwhelmed girls' dogs, you know, because they just need that little more patience and time and, but they come around great.
A 188-1353. This is Maggie and she's enjoying being petted.
She is. She's doing okay.
Good girl, Maggie.
Good girl, Mags.
Raina, we have a small dog.
Look at the baby girl. Now, looking at this girl, look, she come trotting in here.
She did.
She doesn't have any gray.
Nope.
She's, she's just gorgeous.
How old is she?
They're saying 13 and I don't believe it. I don't believe it.
No.
And also, but even if, they can live to be 20 years old.
Sure they can.
If, you know, I mean, she's in good health. She's got good weight. She's, she's just prancing around so happy. Sweet, sweet girl. Come see, what is her name?
Milk.
Milk, milk.
You know, she knows her name. How cute is that? Her A number, 1901356. You know, it would just give you such heart to adopt a 13-year-old dog, a 13-year-old cat, a 13-year-old whatever. Come, Milk would be so easy, you guys. She doesn't need the six-week training program.
No, she does not.
She's ready to go home, sit in your lap, chill and watch, oh, I don't know, your favorite TV show. One A, 1901356. She's falling asleep in Raina's arms. Raina just met her, guys. She would be so, so easy.
This is where she wants to be and she should be at this point in her life. And just enjoy life with quality at the end of her life. But again, they, these guys can live a long time. These little dogs live a long time.
Don't get her thinking that it's going to be a short term. This could be a long term. Treat her well and she'll pay you back.
Yep. Awesome dogs.
Amazing, amazing.
All these seniors, to me, they're just middle-aged. They're not even really seniors and they have some life left and they're going to get trained. I loved them all. They're great. And that little Milk, awesome.
No training required.
No training required. Speaking of training, though.
Oh.
Okay, so had a friend ask me about begging at the table. Begging at the table or begging for food, begging in the home, how to deal with that, okay? Dogs are smart, you see. They know you got stuff on your plate, you're cooking, you know, their nose knows.
Yep.
So of course they're going to want what you have and oftentimes people have given them things that they've had in their plate or, you know, inappropriately given them people food. I give people food all the time. I'm not saying people food is bad, provided it's healthy people food, not a lot of seasonings and some things that are toxic, but provided you use it appropriately, they have to earn it, then that's fine. But feeding off of your plate or doing things that, you know, encourage them to beg.
Beg, okay.
And I always, when I go into the homes, I say, dogs should not be under the table at all. Well, he just lays there, but I think it's inappropriate. It's fine if there's no food, but once food is there, you know, out of the area. But let's say you are sitting down to eat and here comes your dog. They've, they've already ate their food and I want yours and all that. So here's the thing, there's just ways to deal with it. One of it, of course, is training, which means you teach your dog to go lay on his bed.
While you're eating.
While you're eating and he has to stay there and you have to go through that training process to teach them that. The other way is, of course, management. Set a gate up, put their bed on the other side of a gate in the hallway or in the kitchen or off the dining room or wherever. He has a bed. You put him behind that gate, give him a stuffed Kong, a bully stick, something he enjoys. Enjoy your meal without him being present. And then you ultimately teach the dog that, oh, when they sit down to eat, I go here and I get something good.
Perfect.
You could hold off on feeding them their dinner even so that they're more apt to want to chew on their Kong or their bully stick. Usually stuffed Kongs are great, once you teach them what those are. But something special. Make it special when you're eating, that they get something special as well, but they just can't have access to you, okay?
Right, right.
So again, training, training along with management, you know, is important because you can't really train without having the management tools in place either. But training is important, but management is pretty easy. If you just want to put him away, he can still see you. Don't banish him.
Right.
Let him see you and he's on his bed and, you know.
It's not punishment.
It's not punishment.
It's training.
It's just training and having them learn, oh, this is the routine I fall into. Okay, I can't be under the table. I got to go here. I get something good. And after you've eaten, then you can feed your dog. My dogs eat before or after, it doesn't matter for me. Some people go, you always have to eat first before your dog and that to me, I don't agree with. It's about my schedule, basically.
Yeah, yeah, and they're flexible.
And they're flexible. It doesn't matter. It's just about how much control do you have of your dog? How much do they listen and what kind of management plans do you have in place to enforce what you want your dog to do?
What their expectations are in terms of your behavior.
Absolutely, absolutely. So it's pretty easy and straightforward. Just got to figure out how to set up your house to do it. You could also tether. If you don't want to do a gated area, you could do a tether situation where you tether your dog to your bed over in the corner. Tethering is a way to secure your dog, you know, so he's, he can't get up and move around and come and bug you.
We had one dog who was a little bit used to begging, the one who barked when you gave him treats.
Ah, yeah.
So there's some management that probably needs to go on there. So it can happen.
It happens. It can happen.
Right.
We're in the cat room at the North Central Shelter and I'm here with Bonnie, who is one of the employees at North Central. Hi Bonnie.
Hi.
And Bonnie's having a little laryngitis, so I'm not going to ask her to talk very much. We are picturing Waffle. Waffle is six months old. Whoa, she's gorgeous. She's a good, good-sized little cat. She's very sweet. She's shy. She's only been here for a month and she was a stray. Probably belonged to somebody for as sweet as she is.
Possibly. She's a little nervous here. She's very young, so we don't know for sure. She came in in a trap, unfortunately, but no aggression, just nervousness.
Okay, so you know, this is an unusual situation for people, for animals particularly. She was out on her own, who knows for how long, but she survived. I mean, she may have had a feral mom, but she is, she's shy. You know what? If you want to work with a shy cat, I think Waffle might be the one for you. And we need an A number because when you come to see the animals here, A 189-5515. It's not going to do you any good to call her Waffle. You need to have an A number because not everybody knows what her name is. Come see Waffle, a six-month-old shy kitten. We're looking at now a little bit of a black cat with a beaut-- I think we call these tuxedos. This is a beautiful female tuxedo. Her name is Rain Louie. She is about four years old. She may have had an owner, but she's had some rough skin issues. She's got some hair stuff going on in the back. Her A number is 190-5263. If you've had cats before, you know, oh, where are you going, Rain Louie? She said, I'd like to walk around a little bit. Oh, let me see if I can see some of the other cats. So she is not shy. She's a friendly girl. She's lived with somebody, possible owner, wasn't interested in taking her back, but she is gorgeous. Tuxedo with white paws. Her name is Rain Louie, 190-5263, about four years old and she's going exploring. Dusty's trying to get a picture of these cute little kittens. They're all females. They're all about two and a half, three months old and they are shy and you know what? They kind of cling together because it's a little bit of a protection. They were strays, somebody found them, but you know what? Sometimes you find little kittens on the street and, oh my gosh, they're so cute. Their A numbers, 190-8241, 190-8244 and 190-8243. If you're thinking of a kitten, we've said it before and we'll say it again, you might want to get more than one if you don't already have a cat at home. And if you're really a glutton for punishment, you could take three because they will definitely entertain themselves and not bother you as much. But you know what? You can do one. It's not imperative that you take three of them at a time. And if you have an older cat, a kitten might be just perfect for you. Okay, so we have three female, two and a half, three-month-old kittens. All of the animals at the Animal Services shelters will be vaccinated, microchipped and sterilized before they go home. These kittens will have all of those activities performed also. Come see these darling kittens, three female girls. We are looking at an absolutely beautiful calico. This is Oatmeal. Oatmeal, you are so cute. A year old, oh my gosh, she's beautiful. Bonnie, but she wants to go exploring like our other black cat did. She is darling. She's a stray. She's a year old. She's kind of a chatty Cathy. Her A number is 190-7934. You can put her back in or hold her. Oatmeal said, I want to go exploring. I'm out and please let me go around. But she's very friendly. She's a busy little girl. She's a year old, you know? And there she goes. Okay, Oatmeal, she said, it's just time for me to go see what's going on. No, 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 don't keep me in here. Oatmeal, a year old at North Central. We have a special orange tabby and, you know, I'm, I'm actually a dog person, but orange tabbies are, can be the best cats ever. And this cat has a special story. He is 10 years old. He's a sweetheart. He lived in a house for 10 years. This isn't fair to Dino. And by the way, his name is Dino. A 188-8268. He's a senior cat. Do you have senior cat programs where their adoption fees are less?
We have a senior for senior program. Usually senior citizen of the cat over seven years old, so he would qualify prices themselves. They would want to call and check in to find out what that pricing is for that. But at this point, we probably don't need it. All our cats are actually free to adopt right now. They come fixed, so spayed or neutered, microchipped and vaccinated, all for free.
Okay, so you don't have to be old to adopt Dino, but Dino is old. Well, he's not old. He's 10, but he could live another 10 years. But you know, he is a senior as far as our kittens and the other cats we've looked at are concerned. Please come see Dino, 188-8268.
And he does get along with dogs per the owner, previous owner.
Okay, he's a friendly boy. He's just going, why am I here? This isn't where I belong. Please come see Dino and take him home. Okay, we have, unfortunately, another 10-year-old cat. This one was a stray. Beautiful charcoal. Oh, just a beautiful boy. And boy, it is a boy. I'm looking because it doesn't have a name. I'm going to call him, oh, I don't know, Gray Boy. 1895613. He was a stray, sweet as can be, has been here for a little over a month. Oh my gosh, he obviously lived in a home. 10 years old, you guys. He's got 10 more years. You don't want to deal with little kittens running around chewing, jumping, clawing on everything. How about Gray Boy here? 1895613. Look at how friendly he is. He's loving Bonnie's attention. He says, yeah, I'd probably like to get down just to explore, but I'm not as pushy as that little calico around the corner from me. This is Gray Boy, 1895613, 10 years old. He's got another good 10 years to go. And he is green eyes gorgeous. Courage came in with a baby and a stray. You know, probably a feral. She's about three years old, beautiful, black and white. And she's doing quite well, Bonnie.
Yeah, she's doing a lot better. Maybe she was a little more protective with her baby in the cage. Baby's been adopted and she's just here looking for a home.
Oh my gosh, she's a sweetheart. Her name is Courage. She did have Courage. 1A1906937. Remember, you need the A numbers when you come to look for a cat. Three years old, already had a litter. Her kitten was adopted. She's looking for a home now. This is Courage at North Central, microchipped, vaccinated, and sterilized. And Bonnie said that somebody is paying the adoption fees for the cats at North Central right now. So this could be a good time. And you're not limited to one. You can do two cats. Bonnie is petting Pickle, who absolutely loves it. Pickle is a six-year-old Siamese mix. Oh my gosh, what a gorgeous male cat. Pickle, you have beautiful blue eyes. You need, oh, sit down and make yourself comfortable. A1907294. I haven't heard a lot of chatty Cathy out of Pickle. Siamese sometimes are chatty, but this guy seems to be, oh, beautiful, blue eyes. I'm sorry. His name should be Paul Newman, I'm just saying, but it's Pickle. A1907294. Pickle is about six years old. He's loving the-- is he purring? Okay, he's got me at the gecko when you said he's purring. What an awesome boy. Come see Pickle at North Central, A1907294.
So that's our show. Thanks so much for watching. Now, if you didn't see the animal that you want to make your new family member, please go to their website, laanimalservices.com. There are thousands of animals just waiting for a great home. Remember, stay a nude of your pets. It's the law, and it's the best way to keep them safe, happy and healthy, and at home with you. Also, you can volunteer. You can donate, all kinds of things. You can foster a pet for just a brief while. There are all kinds of ways to help, and that website will tell you the different ways. See you next time on Adopt a Pet Today.
Thanksgiving is the time of year when family and friends get together to enjoy each other's company and a myriad of delicious foods. We have a tendency to include our four-legged family members in this feast, which often results in overindulgence. Thanksgiving weekend is also a busy time for emergency veterinary clinics. Dogs and cats suffer very serious and sometimes fatal consequences from turkey bones, too much rich and fatty foods, and just plain overeating. When giving pets treats, you must consider the relative size of their body compared to yours. If you visualize yourself as a whole pie, comparatively, your dog is only one slice of pie. Consequently, sharing an unfinished plate that still holds a generous serving of mashed potatoes with gravy, a few bites of turkey, and a small slice of pumpkin pie with your best friend can make them feel miserable. If you want your pets to enjoy the holiday, stop by a pet food store and purchase some new dog biscuits or cat treats, then reduce the amount of their regular meal to accommodate the treats they will be getting throughout the day. If you are planning a quiet holiday at home without a lot of company and confusion, and you don't already have a dog or cat to share your life with, this could be the perfect time to visit one of our six L.A. Animal Services centers and fall in love with your new best friend. You can get them settled in while you have a couple days off of work. L.A. Animal Services is offering reduced adoption fees the 29th through the 1st. Visit any of our six locations for more information, or go to laanimalservices.com.
This is the motor race. Twenty-three million motor cars on the boulevards and highways of America. All of them going someplace in a hurry. All of them tuned to the fast tempo of American life. And to keep this torrent of traffic flowing steadily and smoothly, calls for a standing army far greater than that of national defense. An army trained and equipped to speed you on your way in safety. Nobody calls them heroes, but they save thousands of lives just the same, carrying on in a thankless, often misunderstood service. Of course, there are still motoring accidents, all too many of them. In fact, last year, accidents cost American motorists more than $2 billion. Here's one. Fortunately, it wasn't business. It's everybody's business. Accidents don't happen behind everyone. There is a very definite reason. And by following two simple common sense rules of the road, these costly, often tragic mishaps can be avoided. First, keep your car fit to drive. Second, drive with courtesy. Let's reenact the accident which has just occurred and find the reason. There he goes, obeying the speed laws, driving at a conservative pace. He thinks his brakes are all right, and perhaps they are for ordinary usage. Of course, he isn't expecting an emergency, but here is an emergency. He stamps on the brakes. A serious accident that could have been prevented if his car had been fit to drive. Faulty braking is the true public enemy number one of safe motoring. Few motorists realize the tremendous momentum of a motor car in motion. For instance, at 60 miles an hour, the average car actually has greater impact power than a six-inch projectile. Or to put it another way, at a mile a minute speed, your car has the momentum equal to driving off a 10-story building. Trick photography, of course, but it's no exaggeration of the job your brakes have to perform to stop your car at 60 miles an hour. How are the brakes on your own car? Could you stop as quickly and as smoothly as this Plymouth? Notice that although the driver had both hands off the steering wheel, there was no skidding. According to police safety standards, at 20 miles an hour, your car should be able to stop within 36 feet. The new Plymouth stops in half that distance. Put your own car to that test. See how well it measures up with modern safety standards. For safe, certain stopping, brakes must work equally and evenly. This testing machine plays no favors. In a minute, it tells you whether your brakes are trustworthy. Don't take a chance. Be sure your brakes are right. And when you buy a new car, be sure it has self-equalizing hydraulic brakes. Out on the boulevard and the open road, little acts of carelessness frequently are responsible for major consequences. Hey! That was close, and it might have been closer. Just suppose our Plymouth hadn't had the world's safest brakes. Here's what might have happened. Of course, the driver of the leading car should have signaled. On the other hand, the other driver disregarded one of the primary rules of safe motoring. He was following closer than his assured stopping distance. And speaking of hand signals, here's a set which are clearly understandable to any motorist. This clearly indicates a left turn. Here is a signal for a right turn. Attention following traffic. She's going to stop. Now let's leave the boulevard for a moment for a little lesson in courtesy. On foot, this chap is the very soul of courtesy and chivalry. He has all the marks of breeding which distinguish a gentleman from a hoodlum. But when he gets behind the wheel of an automobile, he suddenly becomes a 100 horsepower bully. The man who would never consider blocking a theater aisle thinks nothing of loping along at a snail's pace out in the lane of fast traffic. A nuisance, of course, but more important, a genuine menace to safety. Anyone who wants to pass does so at his own risk and everyone else's risk. In this enlightened day and age, can you imagine two gentlemen battling tooth and nail to decide which will be the first into an elevator? But how often have you observed drivers crumple fenders, or worse, in some utterly childish attempt to beat out a fellow motorist? On the football field, this probably would be classified as high-grade broken-field running, but on the boulevard, it is the quick route to trouble. Follow the cut-in driver home, and nine cases out of 10, you'll find he's hurrying to nothing more important than last week's funny paper. And that at the risk of his fenders and perhaps his neck. Ah, our snake driver is thrown for a loss by the traffic squad. And let's hope they keep him on the sidelines for the rest of the season. Traffic lights are intended for traffic control, but there's always someone who tries to beat the light. At best, it gives him only a few feet advantage in a headscarf, and sometimes... Was it worth it? Of course not. But it cost American motorists thousands of fenders and more last year to prove it for themselves. You can win only a few seconds, and you can lose a couple of months in some hospital. Anyone is a sucker to gamble against such odds. How much do you actually save by taking chances? Amazingly little. In a recent test conducted by police in a metropolitan city, two new Plymouth cars staged the most unusual race across town. Both were driven by expert drivers, but what a difference in the driving. One car was driven at a pace bordering on recklessness. If the run had not been under police supervision, it is quite probable the driver would have landed in jail. In fact, had he not been an expert driver, he might have landed in the emergency ward. The other car, driven over the same route, held a conservative pace. Its driver didn't loaf, but he obeyed every law of the road and of motoring courtesy. Yet, when the 12-mile run was completed, it was found that the driver who had cheated the traffic code had run by a margin of only three minutes. Think of it, 15 seconds saved per mile, and think also how dearly he might have paid for those seconds. Motoring must be made safer. The police of the nation are doing their part, smoothing the flow of traffic, reading out the unfit and the reckless drivers who would turn the boulevard into a speedway. The motorcar manufacturers are doing their part with the safest motorcars in all motoring history. And Plymouth is setting the pace in safety construction. Plymouth's hydraulic brakes are self-equalizing, therefore positive and safe. Plymouth's performance is sure-footed. A new sway eliminator prevents dangerous side sway. And for lasting protection, Plymouth provides an all-steel body of remarkable strength. Steel reinforced with steel, welded forever into a mighty bulwark of unyielding safety. The 1935 Plymouth is unquestionably the finest low-priced car ever built. More spirited in performance, more thrilling to drive, and more comfortable to ride in. Above all, it is the safest low-priced car in motorcar history, but the rest is up to you. After all, the safest motorcar can be no safer than the driver at the wheel. The best rule of the road is: don't gamble. Play safe. Drive a Plymouth and drive it with consideration.